...meeting again towards the end of summer when it's also part of the annex.
Portion boards, ARB.
I'm Sashen Duvan.
Tuesday, first Thursday of the month at seven o'clock in Billich Hall. Playing commission?
It'll be May 21st at seven o'clock, Billich Hall.
Zone borders, army and appeals?
Nothing scheduled.
Western Reserve Fire District?
The Western Reserve Fire District will have their monthly meeting on Wednesday, May 14th at 7:30. We are changing our location from the township building to our new fire station annex. That'd be number 92. On State Route 170 at 7:30.
I'll give everybody a copy of the notice. I'll have your force board and then go on with them, meeting. I gave everybody a copy of the notice.
When's your next meeting then?
I don't know. If it was out there, I didn't bring it.
How about High Memorial?
What is it?
May 23rd? May 21st? Three o'clock. Report from mayor, nothing I'm writing. The April court report has been processed. April violations bureau account has been balanced. And a couple people I've seen in the area have asked me about the gate in the woods. It is open. People want to go down and drive down and see if people saw that. Monday also. So that is open.
Motion to accept the mayor's report.
Sorry?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Report from fiscal officer.
Okay, I'm circulating around a list of bills to be paid. You will notice on this, there is $6,590 going to the US Marshals. I know that we discussed the Silverado vehicle cost $5,000. And I think that Russ will be going over the additional $1,500. Because it's for like those stores and stuff like that. But this whole amount, from the way that I understand it, will be fully reimbursed.
Is this a verdict?
Yes. Also, the 2012-2013 audit of the village, financial audit, has begun as of yesterday. Prelimarily, probably three to four weeks, and it should be finished. Elder Aginter sent us another invoice for the Heinz contract repairs. $286.69. We discussed that with Russ. He's gonna go back down again and get ahold of them and get this ironed out. Enter report.
Motion to accept. Next, that one. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? And from deputy clerk. So administrator's not here, so that's the best part of it.
All right, I did look at the ordinance that Linda had given regarding the motor vehicle tax. And I think it's fine. I just have one change to it. Make sure that the sections were correct, 45, 04, 172. Instead of saying additional, just leave it as revenue, just needed. And then specify including approving any kind of other threats. Other than that, they're getting $5, just ready to go.
Great, thank you.
I did look at this a little bit, the ordinance that Mr. Salem brought. And I do want more time, effort to study it. It does allow for a change if there are any problems with Aqua Ohio that you need to increase this. And I'm not sure how that would work. Could you help me with that part of it?
Yeah. Sir, we have that standard, what we would want would be, God forbid, say like if the EPA would come in and say, "You have to restructure your treatment plant." It's gonna cost you under $12 million. But that's been, that's been standard language in there for the past 30 years. We've never used it, and we wouldn't intend on using it. That would just be if there was a disaster.
That's where my job is, to look out for those things. You know, help it. I mean, the other part of it, that I just had a question about the section ten, that the ordinance is concerning rates that were provided earlier are repealed. So does, if council passes this, does that mean that the rates that they had agreed to prior are gonna go up? Or does it, or does it just keep them? Because it said 4.95 for 13, 14, 15, and 16. It didn't seem like it went up. But I didn't know why that language would be there then.
The only reason was, was because that, the ordinance for '12, '13, and '14 is gonna go away. This is gonna, this is gonna enact '15 and '16. And I mean, you know, if you wanted words to meant that some other way, that would mean the same thing. You know, we don't have a problem with that.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. So that I could advise council if there was an increase that they were authorizing by passing the ordinance. I didn't think there was, but I wanted to make sure that there was.
No, 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 no. And also, you should have the old ordinance going, not off the vitamin, so that you can see there's no fuzzy math in the sections.
And I will say that what is in this ordinance, which I'm sure is in the contract, is exactly as it is on the form of the eight months.
The only thing I get on the two tables, we multiply just those two tables by 4.95%. The rest of the fixed fees and the tap-in fees, everything stayed the same. You can compare those.
Yeah, and I went through it just quickly, and I looked at even things like dishonor payments, reconnection fees, exactly as is stated in the ordinance, as I see Mr. Salem present it to me tonight to review it. So I felt comforted about that. We did meet tonight with Mr. Kudowski from the village about a bicycle law. And we have one right now in the village that I think is at least outdated and maybe illegal at different points. So I'm going to advise council to repeal the ordinance concerning bicycle laws right now. And then to consider whether or not you want to enact the state statute as your own ordinance, or if you want to keep the state statute as the law as you go forward. That's something you can think about. But for now, since we know that some of the ordinance is illegal about riding on the sidewalk and different things like that, I think for liability, the council should move maybe at the next meeting to enact an ordinance repealing 440 in its entirety. I think it's 440.
444.
I'm sorry, 444.
And what is the new state statute?
Well, the new state statute is 4511. 4511 is huge, and encompasses everything in Ohio that you can be moving deals, including cars, trucks, bicycles, motorcycles, snowmobiles. And in its entirety, found within its entirety, our section's dealing with bicycles. I'm pretty confident, although I didn't go through the concrete home, that anything that the village ordinance has concerning bicycles can be found in the state statute. And I will make sure that before we come back here. But that is what everyone else uses to govern bicycles in their towns and villages. The only downside, if you will, and I don't think it is because obviously we haven't used it, but if there is a, if there's a violation of the state ordinance, that money goes to the state. If there's a violation of the village ordinance, the state statute, village ordinance, the money goes to the village. But I'm gonna guess that there hasn't been one time in the last oh many years that the village ordinance concerning bicycles was cited and used and we got revenue from it. And the amount of money that you might spend enacting the village ordinance or adopting a state statute would probably equate or outweigh what you're gonna garner for revenue. So, you know, I would say at the very least, I would recommend you repeal 444. And then decide as council, as you move forward, if you see that the officer, they're citing people under the statute, that you want to have your own accompanying village ordinance. This is what the city of Youngstown is doing in its entirety. They've taken the state statute and taken every part of it and adopted it to the Youngstown ordinances. So they keep all the money in their city. Because when I was a prosecutor down there, I was always told, "Make sure you cite under the city ordinance rather than state statute." The only thing you're gonna lose, you're not losing much, if anything at all.
I don't think there's anything in there about riding a bicycle when you're campaigning, is there? I'm looking it up now.
Question, Eisenstein and Barheiser situations, do you have anything to say?
I don't. I haven't talked, I spoke to Nate about it in a while. You know, I haven't heard anything from any attorneys for Mr. Eisenstein or Mr. Barheiser. So I have no information.
Have you been over that way?
I do look for it every day.
Yeah, yeah.
All the rain, the mud is washing away, and it's, you know, sometimes I wonder if we shouldn't just go ahead and mitigate that nuisance ourselves and charge into their property tax. I'm killing moles to take it to them.
Bill, we're talking some serious money here.
Yeah, and they were paying for it.
He's not paying to get, get the place built. He don't have any money. But that's a mess. And I guess we're yesterday, we're gonna start with that.
Oh, look, I don't remember if village, if the village has the power to, if it's a nuisance on its own and then, because I know for instance, we were talking about the trees, and the village has the power, if there's a public safety issue, you know, to cut down a tree and then to charge the homeowner, and of course, we've done that now. I don't remember that there's anything in the ordinance or in state statute that says you can, you can clean up an abated property or property of nuisance and then go back and charge. Nor am I sure that you can go on a property and affect it like that. I think a tree, in the eyes of the law, is one thing, but a home is something different. But I wanted to say that.
I think you can, just because, I know I've seen many times other communities would declare a property nuisance. I just saw in the paper, in the paper the other day, board of township, three properties, nuisances for overgrown grass. They may have cut the grass, and they're gonna charge their property tax and cost. If that's typical, then.
Well, yeah, and that, and that, you know, those two examples are pretty indicative of what the law is going to try and cosmetic. I mean, I think we're talking about going and doing something to foundations and to, it's a little more. I just want to make sure before I would tell you to use it, that I was, I checked it out.
Okay, thanks.
That's it.
Motion to approve the source of report. That one, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, report from chief of police, Sam Street.
Ben Wright.
Russ?
Yeah?
Do you recall the village, maybe when we had a magistrate, did we have any fines for our bike ordinance? Did we make any money on it?
I don't remember.
Probably never, huh?
Thought that I don't worry about it. Good thing we were.
Definitely, definitely got worth keeping.
We were talking about repealing the village ordinance with bicycles. Because some of it's outdated and probably illegal. And then if we would replace it with the state statute and adopt it as an ordinance, would it be more money to enact it than, than the money we're losing, we're losing? Yeah, it would, yeah. And I, and my guess was, we hadn't cited too many people for bicycle statutes. There was a lot more of. Thanks.
Make a motion, will you accept the police report?
Second.
All in favor? Can you oppose? Report from engineer.
Well, a couple things. One, they're starting the sidewalk up on Route 170. And they're gonna make a roundabout, a shared building and Matthews building. And that's gonna start. And the sanitary sewer in the woods hasn't, they haven't done anything yet. So I guess the weather's been hazardous for my rooms. Everything else is okay. Except we got potholes all over the place, bloody mines.
Motion to approve the engineering department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Reports from outstanding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance.
Okay, I guess we should just start with everything in order, it's on the agenda. So let's see here. The levy renewal. We have numbers from Anthony Magnetta at the county. The actual difference between the village revenue for a renewal to bring in $176,002 as a replacement, $183,629. Not much of a difference, $7,629. Finance met on Monday, we discussed this after we've had a couple of different meetings where we've talked about what's gonna happen with this largest levy that we have for revenue, actually. And since it was coming due at the end of this year, how we would go about approaching what we needed to do. And we decided that we're recommending that we do it as a renewal. I don't know how many people are actually aware of the fact that the state made another change last year, and that they have done away with the 12.5% rollback that was always given to homeowners before. So you're gonna be seeing these things on your taxes. And it will only affect replacements and new levies. So any renewal is going to maintain that 12.5% reimbursement, okay? And so what happens is it's discounted to the taxpayer on your taxes that you see. And the state would make it up to the village, they would make it whole for the village. The state is no longer going to pay any part of that. So it's going to be dumped on the taxpayer. So on those replacement levies that you see, or new levies, we're going to pay another 12 and a half percent of, you won't get that discount anymore on those taxes. Which, it's beyond me, how these things are coming out of Columbus. And it's no wonder they have this wonderful rainy day fund. That's, probably shouldn't even be saying that, but anyway, that's exactly how it is. Anyway, our recommendation is that we go with a renewal at the same rate, 3.2 mils. And we will have $176,002 on the revenue. On a $100,000 home, that equates to 94.08. Pardon me?
For a year, perhaps?
These are annuals, aren't they?
Annuals.
And we know that, you know, we're all very well aware of the fact that this budget and what I thought originally last year was a pretty decent budget, that you have a balanced budget. And taking a closer look at those numbers, realized that what balanced your budget was actually that estate tax that came in. Or it would also been the deficit spending budget. So we've been pretty consistent with having deficit budgets. We're going to have one again this year. So every time we were doing this, we're dipping into Star to cover the balance. And of course, we know that that won't last forever, because at this rate, going into approximately $100,000 a year, it'll be gone, in eight years, it'll be gone. And so we'll have nothing to cover a deficit spending budget. So we are gonna really have to think seriously about it next year, possibly doing something. But we didn't want to rush to do this, and we don't want to ask the taxpayers for anything more than we absolutely need to ask for. So for the time being, I'd like to see with some of the little changes that we've made this year, how it's gonna affect the budget, and look at numbers very closely next year, and get some ideas of how we can help keep the town on solid ground. In order to move forward with this, I just have to be sure that everybody is on the same page with doing this as a renewal and not a replacement.
Well, look at the history of yesterday's election. Renewals passed. Some of them. Most of them. They seemed to do better.
And there, it was probably because they went for a permanent. That worked, you know, probably as well then, as well as the article that was in the newspaper. That was really pretty negative for them.
Prevail of opinion, opinion is spring is not a good time for taxes on the air.
Okay.
So how do you feel?
Do you wanna show a hand or something?
Well, no, we're going to do, we're gonna do a vote, of course, on the actual ordinance for it. But is everybody okay on this? I mean, we have enough people who feel that way. We're gonna go ahead and submit it to the county, so that they'll certify it. And then we'll move forward on the three, we'll do three readings to give our residents a chance to come in and speak on it if they want to. And we'll go forward with it. We'll start, we'll start that with the first reading at the next meeting. Okay, so, next we have a town tax. So you heard Anthony talk a little bit about this, and that's because I've been in touch with the state, Department of Taxation, and we've done some research on this. And we are, as a village, permitted to put on one more $5 permissive tax. And so we have all the paperwork in place that we need. We're going to have an ordinance at the next meeting. We'll do three readings on this as well, to give our taxpayers a chance to speak on it. It's a relatively small amount of money, $5 on this, so you don't go through the same procedures because of that. You don't have to go through the same thing that you do for a regular tax levy, okay? So we're good to go. Of course, that money will go, one of the really good things that I like about this is that money goes directly to the street fund. Can't be used for anything but those particular purposes. So, and that is maintaining roads, and we certainly need the money for that. So, we'll be ready to move on that at the next meeting. And we have a resolution tonight for the American Legion for Memorial Day parade. It's $100, the same as last year's donation. And the resolution is to show proper public purpose, so we'll move on that tonight. Tonight, we also have the second reading of the ordinance for the records retention schedule. Finance also looks, is looking at the insurance policies, which are coming due about March 24th. We will need to move on this at the next meeting, May 20, May 24th, sorry. So we'll need to move forward with this at the meeting on, is it the 20th? The 20th, we have a meeting, okay. And in so doing and reviewing these policies and what changes there were, we had a couple of things that we went over with Wickers. It's actually going to be a slightly lower premium than what we had last year. It's just gonna save about $160. One of the things that we do need though on this bill, because we reviewed all of these different things that are added onto the policy on extensions, they happen to list refreshment stands. Which brought about conversation about Celebrate Poland, okay? And so we inquired about that, to be sure, on liability for that issue. And what we need from Celebrate Poland is their certificate of liability insurance for the village. Because our, we're being advised not to indemnify anything. That's across the board. So it's just a simple, and I'm sure they probably have that in place anyway because of the fireworks. I'm assuming that they do a certificate of liability insurance.
Anthony, are you okay with that? Have we done that before?
I don't, I don't remember.
I don't recall.
Certainly, it's not a bad idea. I, you know, the issue about indemnification and liability. Unfortunately, these things grow, you know, they become more, get more parties involved, and you start thinking about things we had thought of in the past. You know, crossing lines between where power is going, those type of things, how power will be supplied. You've got the American Legion involved, you've got us, you've got the boards, Celebrate Poland. I think the more that you talk about these things, have open communication about, okay, are you covered? You know, have you done your homework? Just so you can say that you did that, and that we checked, I don't think it's a bad thing. I don't remember talking about in the past, but I'm sure they have. If they're gonna shoot this fire up, I guarantee they have.
It's general business practice to get a certificate of insurance if you're doing some stuff. Like tenants get it for the land that belongs to the village, so it's a common practice. It's not just selling. Because it's not, you're paying for it, you're in charge, you're paying.
Yeah, Wickers said that they handle a lot of these, and this is what they're recommending to all of their customers. And said, this is how we go about it. We are looking at our renewal with the same two companies. Scottsdale and Demne will be the law enforcement area, and then collective will be everything else.
I would tell you that my, my father had, he had a case years ago where he died at the Pittsburgh Pirates game. Pirates went off, and then they came down right on him. And he, you know, you look at all the different folks who could have been Pirates company, the Pirates, the stadium. So you make sure that someone else is doing their part, if not, then the village is liable. So this is just a good practice.
So I think that covers everything we were gonna do from finance.
All set? And motion to accept the report. All in favor? Can you oppose? Legislation and policy committee.
Well, Tony kinda covered our discussion about bikes. And hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have an ordinance that revokes the town and the village's ordinance and accept displaced provisions in the state ordinance with control. They control right now, actually, but they've just eliminated our ordinance, which had some anomalies in it, which are correct. And so that's why we discussed with Frank Kudowski at the beginning today. About it with Joe and Bill.
Motion to approve legislation report. Second. All in favor? Can you oppose? Police and bike committee.
Nothing with police or bike.
Street sidewalks and drainage.
Well, we didn't have anything to discuss tonight about the, pretty seeing any equipment, right?
No, no.
All right, blooper?
Okay, a few things. Speaking of indemnification from liability, did you know we had asked the school board to give us approval for our power to supply the property, the school property next door. And that kinda went ongoing through the winter. So I called Mr. Janafey, the superintendent, and asked him to get it on the board agenda as soon as possible. And he had asked me that, for some sort of letter to indemnify the school from liability, from us. And then the discussion amongst the blooper members, and we agreed that we should not do that. And I hope everybody else agrees with that as well. And thinking along those lines, I went to the people of Celebrate Poland, Bob Lidle specifically, and told him that we were not going to indemnify this for, from liability, and that the service over there will not be supplying electricity to that property. So I clearly told him that all activities on that property needs to be serviced with electricity. Activities on this property can be serviced with that as well. And he was okay with that, he understood. And I guess it was a discussion, obviously, with Celebrate Poland. I think they understand, I'm happy with, and I totally, they understand. So I'm gonna move forward, and I'm going to get the Dicky electric in here, who we used for the electrical work this last Christmas. And I'm gonna have them work on that to disconnect all, everything that leads to the school property. At the same time, we'll make sure and check everything's to code. Because I know we had that inspection, there were problems. And while they're here, I'm gonna have them work on the timer for the Christmas tree. And also, the garden club would like to get an estimate for the, for power to be run over the park. Let me get an estimate for that. And... The bridge, oh yeah, yeah. We're gonna make sure the Pirates, Pirates act it to the bridge when it's over the park. And that's it as far as Celebrate Poland goes. Now, there's also a meeting with the garden club. There was an agreement that was signed last year, Kim, by you, did you call this? About the water? Okay, we, I, we met with the garden club and, and we paid, and we're gonna proceed to provide with the water, the water for this agreement signed last year. And that's it as far as blooper goes. Might as well talk about this now, too. Paula had a business person come in last week and wanted to leave advertising here for the village.
Village, village business.
Yeah, and Paula told them that that's something that we never did in the past. It's advertised for the businesses in Maltine Poland, and which she rightly did. They were a little upset about it, you know, you should be supporting Poland businesses and so forth. So she contacted me, contacted you. Did you get any detail on what kind of advertising they wanted?
Something they can put over their handouts or whatever, talking about what they do. Don't want you to do that for long, because you're great.
Right, Paula kinda gave them her opinion that she didn't think it was proper to do that, and I agreed with her. But she asked me to bring it to council and see what you thought about it. I don't think it's proper for us to advertise for the businesses in Poland here, because then we'd be... then we'd be integrated with posters, flyers, and then there's going to be accusations of preferential treatment and so forth, so I hope you agree with me that...
I agree, I agree.
Okay, I'll just try calling them up.
Maybe they're willing to come in and talk about what they do, and loiter in front of the council they want, but we're not going to be putting, you know, we're not going to advertise for them.
Well, let's see what Anthony thinks about that.
I think this is governmental building, you know, governmental property, and as much as you can act in your official capacity to support the businesses, advertising is probably not one of the ways you can do it, you know, by supporting them. So I, I think there's a distinction you can make between what you can do as a council and what you can't do, and I think this is, this falls right in line with it. But maybe be a little more diplomatic about, you know, how you explain that to me, how you handle it. I know I'm very principled, and, you know, if you even want to meet a caller on that, I'd be happy. Or they may have probably be much more clinical than I am. But just to smooth it over a little bit, and just explain that, you know, we love to help businesses, and there's ways we can do officially advertising in our government buildings on one.
Do you want to do that? I'll call that, I'll let this person, and I don't want to say who it is.
Well, how's he going to call it? You don't say who it is.
He does.
You want to let him speak?
He does.
I got a twenty bucks.
Bill, anything on the farmer's market, what they're doing?
Or is that no?
Not happening, I don't think.
Not happening. I guess they're lacking individuals on streets gates to take charge of that, there's the people that were doing it last year, that themselves doing different things. And there's issues with the location, and so forth.
So blooper, though, is waiving the fee for Celebrate as far as the grounds.
Well, there is no fee because it's not a commercial event. The way it's set, the way it's set up is that if it's a commercial event, and Celebrate Poland is not a commercial event, okay, they should not be charged for that, and that's the way it is on the form. That's my responsibility to determine if it is, you know, what criteria, which event follows, and if it's not a commercial event, so I'm not going to charge them.
And the money that is made, that Greg was talking about, to council at the last meeting, as far as the vendors paying, actually, all that money is reabsorbed at Celebrate Poland and used for...
Fireworks.
Fireworks and expenses.
And expenses.
Something interesting that you might like to know, I talked to one of the officials at Lowville, and, you know, as everybody knows, there's a huge Lowville festival. Curious to know who pays for the police? And the village of Lowville does not pay for the police. They are paid for by the entity that's sponsoring, sponsoring it. And they used to at one time pay for the overtime by the police chief, but this year, starting this year, they're paying none of it. Something that we should think about, you know, because we went from one day to two days, and our costs doubled right there. And, you know, because of all these issues that were happening with money, and it's not getting better, we might have to think about some cutbacks in areas where we're able to do that.
Yeah, that's something to consider for next year. We'll like to do a proposal for this year's, because their budget, their budget is set for that.
The use of the land and the electric bill.
And the electric bill, right, yeah.
I was a little surprised to hear Bob Lidle say that their contribution is three thousand dollars from the township, but it's money that they get from the landfill.
Yes, it's really not.
So there's really nothing out of their budget that goes towards this.
That would be like, that would be like me taking Al's contribution to Celebrate Poland and giving them, saying, this is from the Lowville.
Right.
We wouldn't do that now.
And actually went through the fire board, went those through the fire district, excuse me.
Oh, right.
Because I questioned it at the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Which, you know, and I don't mean to sound like we don't want it here, I mean, because it's a great, it's a great event, and I think that the residents really enjoy it, and I wish that we had a lot of money in this town, but we don't, and that's the problem. We have the smallest budget of all the entities that are involved here, and it seems that we're the ones who are putting out the most money for it, so...
And Celebrate Poland has grown a lot, and I, my personal opinion, I think it's grown to a point where, I'm not sure personally, I don't want to see it grow much more.
Especially in a residential area.
Especially, yeah, I mean, I think it's a great event as it is, but I don't want this, I don't want to see this turn into a church festival type of thing where it runs for a week and just gets, gets out of hand for a Lowville like this.
That's great.
Any report? Motion to accept.
Second.
Call-in favor. Any opposed? Reporters from boards, planning commission. Board of zoning deals. Architecture board.
Was canceled.
Was canceled.
Yeah, he was very sick last week, the ends wife. I knew one of the guys in the house.
Forest board.
I gave everybody a copy at the last minute.
High Memorial. Same. And West Reserve Fire District.
Nothing, I had passed out the...
I have a question about the minutes. Under the legal council's report at the last meeting, April twenty-third, there's a matter says oil slash gas lease dash report update. What is that?
Well, there was no report given, there's nothing new on it.
What is it, what is it?
At one time, they were looking at leasing the North Hill? North Hill property.
What, right.
Um, oh, for, really, for leasing our land, yeah.
For getting royalties and leasing it. Wouldn't that kind of come more to the council, like, we'd have to act on that as opposed to the...
Nope, township.
It's township.
Reserve joint fire.
But, I mean, we're, you say joint, we're part of the joint, right? Don't we have to say that as the council?
The fire board is its own governmental entity that collects taxes from the village and the township.
Yeah, but we own it, though.
They have a five-member government working to make some decisions.
But we have owners, I mean.
You have three representatives on it. You have three representatives.
Yeah, so don't we have to say so?
You have three representatives.
And shouldn't be...
The township has two, the next year, the township will have three, and the Lowville will have two.
Yeah, but shouldn't that, I mean, fracking is such a hot issue, it seems to me that it should come up to the council for consideration to lease the land.
It's not a hot issue anymore.
It's not a decision by this board, it's a decision by that board.
But we don't have it.
We don't own the board, no. We don't own the...
I believe you're represented on the board by over half of it, as part of ownership of it, that's why it's joint chair between the township and the village. And whoever's on it, like, if you would be on it next year as one of the two, and then the township would have three, you would have a say, but I think that that entity is its own governing body, and I think that what they do is designed to be distinct from the township trustees and the village council. It's, it's, it's its own entity combined or comprised of...
We are best. I don't agree with that at all. I mean, we have half ownership of the West, of this fire district, joint.
We don't. We have nothing of it.
We have nothing of it.
So what do we buy? Fire truck or so? We don't have to come and ask you for anything.
So why, why, why we don't have it?
It was called a joint resolution passed by the village council and township trustees back in eighty-something, I believe, which, which gave the jurisdiction to the, to two bodies to provide representatives in alternate years with majority, the township to the village.
It's shared as equally as it can be shared, which is rotation of the council, of the members, and the decisions made by that body then become that body's own. The idea being that, well, at any given time, a majority of either the township or village does agree with what they're about to do, and they would vote it down. If there were three people, let's say, opposed fracking on that board, then that lease wouldn't go, you know, I mean, it's whatever the majority is.
Who's on the West Reserve?
I'm chairman.
I just had to unite them, that should come up to the council for us to think about.
No, there's nothing going on.
Nothing for us, we can't, we have no say in anything, we can't vote on anything, we can't...
But our representatives can.
They're just representatives, just, they're just, they're like trustees to a board.
They're just observers?
They're advisors.
I, oh, they're basically a bunch. I have the council of the fire board.
A way to contrast it is the high board, where you have two members of council. Three, I don't remember.
Two.
Two. The village has, has a direct relationship or ownership of the, of the forest, and council has an invested interest in deciding a product, that's why two members are on that board. This is not that, this is something that is not owned by council, it's an entity that is shared between the township and the village, and is, and is best, I imagine, that the folks that designed the board tried to share their responsibility and the power, if you will. And I understand what you're, what you're, what you're gathering, getting to, but the way to look at it would be to reverse it, that, like I said, if you were one of the three members from the village, and two other members disagreed about, about fracking, and if the two members from township wanted, they wouldn't get it, because that's the way the board's set up. So it empowers whoever the majority is between the village and the township.
And Greg, who's got the chart?
We do. But we have it only members, not, the board doesn't have to come back to council and, and get, just like, let's say...
But the, how about the council members, should they come back?
No, let's say, let's say...
The reports are courtesy.
Yeah, let's say that you were the only member from the village, and there were three members, only one from the village, one from township, one local member from either side, and you didn't want to vote for fracking, but the village council wanted to, would you have to vote for fracking?
No.
You would not. You have your own vote, you would be, you would be governed by the council. I guess that's what you put around.
The district has its own, they have its own tax base. They use the township and the village for their tax base, with their own village, and they have their own financial officer.
But that doesn't make any difference, but it just seems illogical to me, but I'll reiterate that.
Anything else? No.
Motion to approve the report of the fire district.
Second.
Call-in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from special committees. Communications from residents. Any new business? New old business? Motion to ordinances and resolutions.
Why should we take the resolution, authorize a payment of one hundred dollars to American Legion?
Second.
This is an emergency, so...
It's an emergency.
So a roll call?
Yes, wait, period, and clear of emergency. Roll call, please.
Was this the wait three reasons?
Yes. The motion is to wait for three reasons, adopt by emergency, the resolution for the resolution. Roll call is Mr. Danvett.
Yes.
Attorney Lemon.
Yes.
Mr. Major.
Yes.
Mrs. Cernan.
Yes.
Mrs. Yash.
Yes.
Okay, let's move the resolution, authorize a payment of one hundred dollars to American Legion.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Danvett.
Yes.
Attorney Lemon.
Yes.
Mr. Major.
Yes.
Mrs. Cernan.
Yes.
Mrs. Yash.
Yes.
Legislation is often part of the...
All right, any other motions, ordinances, resolutions?
Yes. Wait, that's the second reading.
So no for that?
That's the second reading, sorry.
Second and third reading.
Okay, a motion to send to a third reading, an ordinance establishing the records retention schedule pursuant to a high revised post section one four nine three nine to the village of Poland, county, and the state of Ohio.
Second. Call-in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Presence here for the bills. Chris, that's your job.
Make a motion that the bills be paid.
Second. Call-in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions and amendments here? The one spot council, Linda.
I do not have any remarks.
No comments?
Uh, nothing.
I made sense to see the sidewalk going in on one seventy.
Call-in favor.
I don't know. They got a lot of work there.
Is any of our property, the first two houses, someone decided to get new sidewalks?
I don't, I don't know. I think there is one property there to go to get them connected.
Yeah. Well, definitely. Make a motion to a general meeting at eight seventeen.
Second.
Call-in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please adjourn.
Good job.
Thank you. Now, with creative, no filter, for the...
That's not...
Already taken out.
...